National County Board of Education order. Mr. McQueen, we ready? This time I like to ask everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Are we entertain a motion to adopt the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, we need to amend that agenda for the graduation discussion.
Okay. Mr. Bizit has proposed amending the agenda. Motion by Mr. Bizit, second by Mr. Edwards, to amend the agenda to include graduation. We will go down after 11.1, the Policy Committee report on Ms. Bullock's proposal. Number 12 will be the graduation amendment.
Do we need a motion on that?
Will you have a motion in the second? Motion by Mr. Bizit, second by Mr. Edwards. All in favor of amendment? Ms. Chavis?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Bizit?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins? Mr. Silver?
Yes.
Ms. Washington?
Yes.
Ms. Eve Bullock?
Yes.
Ms. S. Bullock?
Yes.
Motion to amend the agenda is approved. Approval of board minutes. I will entertain a motion to approve the minute.
No move.
Second. Motion by Mr. Sharp, second by Mr. Edwards. Again, we'll do a roll call. Ms. Chavis?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Bizit?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Jenkins?
Mr. Silver?
Yes.
Ms. Washington?
Yes.
Ms. Eve Bullock?
Yes.
Ms. S. Bullock?
Yes.
Motion carried, recognitions.
Good evening, Chair Lamb, Vice Chair Sharp, Superintendent Ellis, and members of the board. We're so excited that we have got some in-person recognitions this evening. As I think you probably already know, we launched at the beginning of last, well, this month, last month, a new recognition process called NCPS Heroes. And we had a nomination form that was sent out to all staff and actually had 46 nominations for NCPS Heroes. And we narrowed those nominations down to four students and four staff members who we're going to recognize this evening. So the criteria for the nominations fell into four categories. Where our H, honesty and integrity. Our E, efficiency and innovation. R, reliable and collaborative. O, outperformance and excellence. So without further ado, we are going to begin our recognitions. We have got a special recognition, a special award that will go to, nope, that one, I'm sorry. We have got a special award that will go to each of the recipients of the hero recognition. And we will do this every month. So the idea is that we will recognize eight people at every board meeting, four students and four staff members for each one of those categories. So our first honoree is Peyton Cook from Southern Nash Middle School. And she was nominated by one of her teachers for honesty and integrity. And Peyton has an exemplar, has been an exemplar student, this is what her teacher shared, throughout the whole virtual learning process. She is always present, always contributing, and always completing work assigned and extra in order to get the most benefit from her education. Peyton was actually the only student to complete an extra credit project over the holiday break. It was time consuming, but she did it and never complained. I'd also like to add that the work was done quickly and without flaw. Peyton not only contributes to the class, but she listens to her peers when they are sharing and adds to their contribution. She is willing to share and help others that are struggling with concepts being taught. Peyton took her own time after school to help a student struggling with the use of a calculator and how to input fractions and other functions. Peyton exemplifies a cobra by being a respectful, responsible, and prepared learner every day. She is an NCPS hero, and I am proud to have her as a part of the Southern Nash Middle School family. Peyton Cook, if you could come forward. And Mr. Ram, and Mr. Ellis, if you could come up and we can get some photos. Hold it nice and tight. There. And if we could get one with just her for the, for the website. Smile. And now we can go to the PowerPoint, Mr. McQueen, for the next one. So because we rescheduled the board meeting, we had two staff members who were unable to be with us tonight. Our honesty and integrity hero, you can go to the next slide, is Mr. Michael Gerard, principal from Edwards Middle School. He was nominated by an Edwards Middle School staff member who wrote, "Mr. Gerard is the calm in the storm. He is proactive in dealing with issues, and he is always willing to listen to concerns of students, parents, and staff. He is a patient listener, and he offers suggestions for forwarding progress to deal with those concerns. He is fair-minded and realistic with his expectations, and he is willing to compromise when special circumstances arise. He treats his staff members as valued members of the team, and that environment fosters a desire in his staff to perform better for the good of the whole. His integrity is exemplified in his consideration of the many moving parts necessary, but he always is true to the goal, educating our students. He works to communicate with all interested parties to be certain that the ever-changing conditions are well-known and compatible with the ultimate goal of student success. While he inspires us to do our best, he also recognizes that sometimes the best is all we can do." If you could go back one slide to that title. So congratulations to Mr. Gerard. I actually went out and gave him his award yesterday and read to the front office staff his, his hero recognition. So congratulations, Mr. Gerard. And our next category, efficiency and innovation. We have a fourth grade student from Benvenue Elementary, Viraj Shindy. And Viraj was recognized by his teacher, who I think is here with him tonight. Viraj Shindy is a virtual student, and he has consistently helped the teacher and other students. Viraj has taught himself how to create Google Forms. He created a weather report by himself and has consistently posted it on our class activity homepage every single day this year. He also has created jokes and riddles to post on the page. He creates raps to encourage other students in his classroom for benchmark or test days. He is a leader in breakout rooms and has created cahoots to run while the teacher is doing small group instruction. Viraj is a true leader. Viraj, if you could come forward. One more, just him. Elementary School. She is a first grade teacher. She was nominated by her principal, actually. Mrs. Jackson is a first grade teacher at Cooper's Elementary. She submitted a video of her students for a contest on highlighting why America is beautiful. She created a 60-second video in which she wrote a song that showed her class's patriotism. When the voting began, she took time to get the video out for people to vote, and she won. Her class won first place for the whole United States, and she will be awarded $2,500 for her classroom. This, this contest was sponsored by Woodman Life. Ms. Jackson, if you could come forward. If we could get one of you just by yourself. We are on to our reliable and collaborative category. We have another student with us tonight, Tyler Ramsey from Southern Nash High School. And Tyler was nominated by a teacher as well. Tyler is a valuable member of the Southern Nash FFA Officer Team. Reliability and collaboration are two of his strongest qualities that he contributes to the team. He never turns away an opportunity to serve his peers, and he can be relied on to attend all meetings and uphold all responsibilities delegated to him. Though seemingly introverted, he always takes advantage of opportunities to work with his peers to accomplish team goals and make our school a better place for all people. When he is not at school, he's raising hens and packaging eggs. He brings the eggs to school to sell to teachers who rely on his fresh backyard eggs, and he has never let his customers down. Congratulations Tyler. You might need to give Mr. Ellis, or Dr. Ellis, some tips on those birds, too. Next, in the reliable and collaborative category, we have got a teacher from Winstead Avenue Elementary, I'm sorry, a media coordinator. She used to be a teacher back when I was at Winstead. From Winstead Avenue Elementary School, Lee Ulrich was nominated by a teacher at Winstead Avenue. This school year has stretched many of us. Our media coordinator, Lee Ulrich, has been the MVP for us this year. She took on the role of technology rollout to nearly 600 five, six, and seven-year-olds and their parents. I don't know how many times I have reached out to her for a child who is having tech issues this year. When I multiply that number by the number of classrooms, it's astounding. She has worked after-hours to meet with parents who could not get here during the day, problem solved, and, and problem-solved sound and Wi-Fi issues, prepared computers and Wi-Fi connections, and helped make technology resources for teachers. If you took her out of the Winstead equation, it would have been a very different year for teachers, parents, and students. Now, she serves our in-school students, meets with small groups of children, and carries her media center responsibilities. Congratulations, Lee Ulrich. And our last category for this evening is outperformance and excellence. We've got a student, Jeremiah McClain from Parker Middle School. He is a seventh-grade student and was nominated by a teacher at Parker. Jeremiah McClain is a seventh-grader at Parker Middle School. He works consistently to do his best, completing assignments asked of him, but also contributing positively to the learning environment with a fact, a pun, or a thought-provoking question. He holds high expectations of himself, and he works to achieve them. Congratulations, Jeremiah McClain. And our last honoree, last but not least, was not able to be with us tonight. Mr. McQueen, if you can go to that last slide. This is our final recognition for outperformance and excellence, excellence. Student Services and Operations Department School Nurse, Deb Terrell. And Deb was actually nominated by a fellow nurse in the school. And ironically, when I went out to the school to get Deb's picture, before I even read her, the statement that the fellow nurse had submitted for her, the, the staff actually called her what was, what was called in here, and you'll understand that in just a second. Deb has led us in tackling COVID headfirst, with a mask on, of course. Her constant dedication and leadership have been vital in keeping our schools safe during uncertainty and so many changes. She is the COVID queen. And so the, the school calls Deb the COVID queen as well. So congratulations, Deb Terrell. And I am going to invite Kristy Grant to come up. Deb, actually, it kicks off another recognition that we have this evening in honor of our school nurses. So Kristy, if you could come forward.
Okay, good evening. Again, today does start National Nurses Week, so we are very proud and honored to recognize our school nurses. Our school nurses are truly our healthcare heroes. They provide quality care to our students across the district and strive every day to keep students healthy and capable of learning. On any given day, our school nurses address a variety of student issues from injuries to managing chronic health conditions. They are health leaders, coordinators, emergency responders, and educators. A little over a year ago, the role of a school nurse broadened considerably. COVID-19 added another dimension to their job, and our nurses did not hesitate to rapidly respond and handle the complex healthcare needs brought on by COVID. They were and still are heavily involved in the creation and implementation of stringent COVID protocol, contact tracing, which is never-ending, providing isolation quarantine guidance, and communication with parents and staff, as well as participation in numerous district planning meetings and increased collaboration with our local health department. Despite the changes that COVID brought, our nurses stood strong and continue to show their ability to adapt to difficult circumstances in order to care for our staff and students. They played a crucial role in the reopening of our schools and continue to be key in keeping them open and filled with students. We are extremely grateful for the extraordinary measures our nurses took that had a significant impact on the outcome of the given medical situation that COVID left us in. It is an honor to stand before you and recognize such a dedicated, dedicated group of women who continue to have a tremendous impact on the health and well-being of our staff and students. So please join me as we show appreciation to our nurses for the work that they have, have done.
That concludes our recognitions for the evening.
Thank you, Dr. Catalana. And then the public input. Each month, a part of at least one regularly scheduled board meeting will be set aside for citizens to address the board through public comment. Sign-up sheet will be available in the communications office for any individual or group to indicate their desire to address the board. Deadline is noon today of the board meeting. Any individual or group can sign up by appearing in person or by calling communications office. The chairperson will decide the amount of time devoted to public comments. The superintendent shall develop additional procedures to ensure that public comment sessions proceed in an efficient and orderly manner. Board members will not respond to individuals who address the board except to request clarification or points made. Except in case of emergency, information received during presentations will not be acted upon at the time it is received. It will take unanimous vote of the board members present to take action on a presentation considered to be of an unusual emergency nature at the time it is presented. Disruptions by any individual or any person of a public meeting will be subject to action in accordance with GS 143-318-17. If the board does not hold a regular scheduled meeting during a month, the board will not provide a time for the public comment at any other meeting held during that month unless a majority of the board votes to allow public comment at the meeting, or unless the purpose of the meeting is a public hearing. We had one speaker signed up for the night. I do not see that speaker, so we will continue the business items. Donations, Dr. Catalana.
Good evening, Chair Lamb, Vice Chair Sharp, and members of the board. We have donations totaling... Don't hit total for you. Hang on one second, let me get the total. The first donation is for $15,000 for Middlesex Elementary School from the Eaton Charitable Trust Fund to be used for general funds. Nash County Public Schools received a donation from Pierce Group Benefits in the amount of $2,000 to be used for the 2021-22 Educator of the Year Celebration. Edwards Middle School received a donation from Nash Autism Society. They donated a refrigerator valued at $926.47 to be used in a self-contained exceptional children's classroom. Williford Family Resource Center received a donation from the Rocky Mount Rotary Club, Nash Rocky Mount Rotary Club. They donated $250 to be used to support students and families within the community. And Tar River Academy received a donation from Sunny Day Group Incorporated. They donated $900 to be used for general funds for students at Tar River Academy. The superintendent recommends approval of all donations as presented.
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept these donations with great appreciation.
Motion, Ms. Chavis, second by Ms. Wallace. All in favor? Say aye. All opposed likewise? Motion carried. Personnel recommendations, Ms. Wallace.
Good evening again, Chair Lamb, Vice Chair Sharp, President, Virtual Board Members. The personnel action report has been presented, and we are requesting your approval at this time.
Hey, I will entertain a motion to approve the personnel recommendations.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Sharp, second by Mr. Silver. We'll do a roll call. Ms. Chavis?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Bizit?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Jenkins?
Yes.
Ms. Washington?
Yes.
Ms. Eve Bullock?
Yes.
Ms. S. Bullock?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Personnel recommendation, information only, Ms. Wallace. When then Administrative Services and Operations Committee, Kelly Education, Ms. Wallace. That was for information only. Closing the Tar River Facility, Mr. Davis. Yes.
I think those are items that was on the, on the list that we reviewed at the session. So we just need a motion to approve those. And I would just like to make the suggestion or recommendation that we did have one, three items on that committee. One was information, two of them were for actions, two for action was the closing of Tar River Academy. And the third one was for Mr. Davis, surplus of the old Rocky Mount Academy. So I think we need a motion, right, from, for the closing of Tar River Academy? The board actually approved that, talked to that?
Motion to close Tar River Academy, but to make a motion to move to a public hearing.
Right, and that's what...
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion based on committee recommendation for a public hearing to close the Tar River Academy at 224 Pearl Street in Rocky Mount and allow Mr. Davis and our Facilities Department to move forward with the rehab of the science building at the current Rocky Mount Middle School.
I second that.
Motion by Mr. Dunn, second by Mr. Sharp. We'll do another roll. Do another roll call vote. Ms. Chavis?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Bizit?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Silver?
Yes.
Ms. Washington?
Yes.
Ms. Eve Bullock?
Yes.
Ms. S. Bullock?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Well, I'm sorry, before you move on, when, when do you want to schedule that hearing? Are you going to have it at the June board meeting?
So I have a, a motion to...
I have a question.
Yes.
Do we need to schedule that right away since we've also given Mr. Davis permission to proceed? I think his, his hangup was needing to move with the renovations. So we covered that in that motion, yeah.
Okay.
Rob, you catch that?
Yeah, I think you can schedule it for the June meeting. I think that was kind of where we landed, but I do think you need to make it, ideally, you'd make a decision tonight so that the chair and superintendent will know whether to put it on the agenda for June, whatever, or, or to schedule something ahead of time.
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion that we put that on our June agenda.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Chavis, second by Mr. Silver. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All opposed likewise? Surplus old Rocky Mount High Municipal Baseball Stadium and the parcels of the land.
Need a motion for that, too?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we move forward with the sale of the surplus Rocky Mount High Municipal Baseball Stadium and allow the parcels to be divided if needed to allow the sale to take place going forward.
Okay, motion by Mr. Dunn.
Second.
Second by Ms. Chavis.
Can I ask a question? Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr....
Where's that land located? Is it right behind the high school?
It's behind the armory.
I got you, I was getting confused. I got you.
Right behind the armory is where the old...
I got you.
The old stadium used to be.
Do a roll call vote, Ms. Chavis?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Bizit?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Silver?
Yes.
Ms. Washington?
Yes.
Ms. Eve Bullock?
Yes.
Ms. S. Bullock?
Yes.
Motion carried. Student Support Services and Operations Committee, Ms. Washington?
Yes, the Student Support Services and Operations Committee recommends approval of the district's mental health plan. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Ms. Chavis, second by Mr. Sharp. All in favor, roll call, Ms. Chavis?
Yes.
Mr. Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Bizit? Mr. Bizit?
He said yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Silver?
Yes.
Ms. Washington?
Yes.
Ms. Eve Bullock?
Yes.
Ms. S. Bullock?
Yes.
Academic Services and Committee. National Everywhere Digital Academy, that was for information only. K-three class size waiver, need a motion to approve that. My future N C resolution, Chad Thompson, I would like entertain a motion to approve meeting, minutes.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Chavis, second by Mr. Sharp. All in favor, Ms. Chavis.
Yes.
Mr. Edwards. Yes, Mr. Bizit.
Yes.
Mr. Sharp.
Yes.
Mr. Dunn.
Yes.
Mr. Jenkins, Mr. Silver.
Yes.
Ms. Washington.
Yes.
Ms. E. Bullock.
Yes.
Ms. S. Bullock.
Yes.
Policy Committee, Ms. Bullock.
The Policy Committee met in March, I believe, and we had several policies laying on the table for thirty days. And we are now at the point where we make a motion for final approval of the list of policies that you received. That would be policy seventy-one thirty, license sure. Policy forty-three, forty-five, student discipline records. Policy forty-three, thirty-three, weapons bomb threats and terror, terrorism, I think it is. And threat, excuse me. Hearing, hearings from the board, policy twenty-five hundred. Policy seventeen twenty-five, forty, thirty-five, seventy-two, thirty-six. Title, non-sexual harassment. Policy sixteen hundred, professional development. Policy thirteen ten, forty oh two, parental involvement. Policy ten, fifty seventy, seventy-three fifty, public records. Policy seventeen hundred, governing principle. I'm sorry, I lost my list. Policy forty-six hundred, student fees. Policy forty-three, thirty-five, criminal behavior. Forty-three, twenty-eight, gang-related activity. Policy forty, twenty-three, educational pregnant. And policy seventeen twenty-six, forty, thirty-six, seventy-two, thirty-seven, title nine. I did that one. Sexual harassment. Policy seventeen hundred, governing principle, removal. Policy. I lost my spot just a minute. Policy fifteen hundred, governing principle. Policy thirteen hundred, governing principle. Parent, parental. Policies. Six, seventeen forty-two, fifty, sixty, responding to complaints. Policy seventeen sixty. Seventy-two, eighty, prohibition against retaliation. Policy seventeen ten, forty, twenty, seventy-two, thirty, discrimination. And harassment. I move that we approve those policies for final, this is, would be our final approval.
Second.
Motion by Ms. E. Bullock, second by Mr. Silver. All in favor, roll call vote.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Lamb, if we're approving the ones that are on the agenda and we're calling them all out, I think she missed thirty-six, twenty.
Oh, did I?
Yeah, to the extent that we're, we're not just, so I think as long as everybody agrees the motion includes all of the ones listed. I think she got them all. That was the only one that I think she missed.
I did miss it. Thirty-six, twenty, extracurricular activities. I did miss that one, sorry.
Okay, no, no, not a problem.
We have a motion and we have a second roll call vote, Ms. Chavis.
Yes.
Mr. Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Bizit.
Yes.
Mr. Sharp.
Yes.
Mr. Dunn.
Yes.
Mr. Silver.
Yes.
Ms. Washington.
Yes.
Ms. E. Bullock.
Yes.
Ms. S. Bullock.
Yes.
Okay, we're down to number twelve, graduation. That was a gender amendment.
I think that would be me. So last month, we had a little bit of discussion. I think Mr. Thompson gave us a layout or something about graduation. My concern is the four tickets. I asked that we increase the ticket count availability to our students. I believe you guys were going to do some investigation, some measurements, get some things at the stadium and come back with us with some, with some more numbers. I just kind of want to open the floor amongst the board for discussion. I'm not setting a number of tickets out there. I think every school may have a different, but I'd just like to start a discussion about as many tickets as we can get them and meet the guidance of the N C Safe Toolkit, the C D C Guidelines. And I'll just kind of open the floor for some discussion there about those more tickets. I'm all in favor of giving him as many tickets as possible, meeting those guidelines.
Mr. Chair, may I?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bizit, how many tickets did you have in mind of us giving?
I, I don't, I don't want to say a ticket number. Because I, if, if I stick you with a number, it may not be able to meet that requirement at one school versus another. It's based off of fifty percent capacity of your stadium. So I, and I'm not sure, I haven't gone out and pulled a tape measure, but I do know, I would feel confident that the stadiums at probably National Central High, Rocky Mount High, maybe have a larger seating capacity than, say, Northern, but I, but I don't know that. So I, I would say whatever the measurements are for fifty percent capacity to meet those guidelines and the guidance that we've been given under the governor's orders, however many students. So you may have two hundred kids graduating at one school, two fifty at another. So I think we just need to do some simple math and figure out what's available for tickets and make those available to those students. Does that answer your question, Reg?
Not really, but it's okay.
Got a hand up.
It has been ongoing for years, the number of tickets available to families. This has been a very difficult time for everybody, families, teachers, and especially the students. For them to reach this milestone, I would hope we could have everybody there, as Mr. Bizit said, within the guidelines, to support them in this final step. So I would be in favor if we could take a look and add as many as legally we can possibly do.
What, what did the high school principal?
That's, that's what I wanted.
I will give a, kind of like a synopsis of, Mr. Thompson met with the high school principals now probably for the third time.
Okay.
So we started with four tickets. Because we normally always stick with four tickets. So they went back and did some, you know, individual school measurements, six feet distancing. And then they increased it to five. I would be concerned if we went over and some schools have more, then some schools have less. And being a former high school principal, you could give twenty-one and someone will want twenty-two. Then my other question is, so are we going to do this next year? Are we going to give five out next year? We're going to go to the stadium next year? Another concern, if we want to go back to normal, I'd much rather have it inside. Because we're spending money on tables, chairs, sound equipment. Because we now have to set up two sites. We got to have an indoor and an outdoor. Now, I'm not sure, but we probably used to do this a long time ago. Where if it rained, you had the indoor and you got so many tickets. And I'm also concerned that the principals are going to have to manage this. Rod, tell me if I'm wrong, but the toolkit is still six feet distancing in pods. Mask wearing, unless, well, they walk in with the mask and they, when they're with their crowd or with their pod, they can take their mask off. When you line up the crowd, they have to be six feet distancing, which means getting into that stadium. That's, that's, that's a lot to manage. And I'm just saying, the principals have, you know, I'll just say this, usually for graduation, we show up and they manage it. That's a lot. I think five's a lot, and I'll be honest with you. When they said five, my concern is, so next year, what is, what are we going to do? I mean, if it goes back to normal, do we go back in the auditorium, the gyms, or we're going to do these outside now? That's, that's where I'm going to, I think if the principals feel like they can manage five, which is more than we are used to giving. I don't know why we would change it now. So I'm concerned if next year we go back to it, we're going to go all the way back into the gyms. And they're going to say, well, last year I got five, why am I getting four now? So that, that, that was my comment.
I, I think we need to deal with this situation currently in front of us and we have to be outside. I don't think we need to worry about next year. I, I do agree that it's, you know.
But the principals will get that question. Now, they will. They're going to get those questions.
No doubt. But, but like I say, I, I just think we're outside this year. We're probably going to be back inside next year and we'll deal with it. And we'll address, you know, the ticket count for the inside, or we may be back outside, be up to this board again next year. But I mean, we've had graduations outside for many a years. Like I say, but just at the point, I, I just want to put it out there. I just think we can do more than four tickets. And then go back to Reg's question.
We've already said we're going to do five. We've already, every school's going to do five now, so.
And does that, does that get us at the capacity close? I mean, you know, is five the limit?
Well, and the problem is, depending on the school, you know, are you going to let Rocky Mount have six because it's a bigger stadium? Punishing a Nash Central, which is a smaller or Northern Ashes is the smallest. That's the problem I'm going to have. Because per square footage, you're right, Mr. Bizit, it could vary.
Right.
In these schools, but I just feel like to tell, you're penalizing kids for where to go to school if you're going to talk about tickets that way. I, I just think we need to be consistent. And if they feel like five is what we need to do, then I, I support five. Mr. Silver, you have your hand up.
Chris, thank you profoundly for telling me what you thought.
I'll let you know tomorrow. I'll let you know tomorrow. I have a daughter graduating from Campbell. She has two hundred and twenty in her graduating class. This stadium is a lot larger than any stadium we've got in Nash County, and we've got four tickets. So I have a in, in hand look.
I, you know, I'm not opposed to five tickets, no, four tickets. I just think we need to be consistent across the board. And perhaps we don't know exactly how next year will, will look. And we have to deal with that when we get there, but I think because of the climate of what we have incurred this year.
I'm in the Nash meeting I'm talking about.
With everything, everything going on, I, I think that our, we'll take, I think it's good. Then we'll address that when we get there later on, maybe then when school opens up again in August, we can address it then, Mr. Bizit, I think, with the, like, though, whether it will be inside or outside or whatever.
Ms. Chair. Ms. Sharp. Is this an item for discussion, this discussion, not an action item, right, just discussion? Well, it's not an action item unless we get a, a motion.
Right, okay. Ms. Bullock had her hand up.
Ms. Bullock.
Yes, sir. I, I want to make sure that if we were to give five tickets, we would still be able to socially distance. And secondly, what if it rains and we have to go inside? Then how many tickets? I, I remember how nerve-wracking it used to be when we were playing for outside. And if there were a cloud in the sky, all day, all day long, we were up in the air. Where is it going to be? And then when it, it was time for the graduation, we still had parents who didn't get the message that we're not outside now, so you can only put two, take two people in or whatever the number, so much has gone on now. I forgot what the number was. But whatever the number, we had people standing on the outside of the door, trying hard to get in because they had a ticket. But they didn't understand that it's, it's raining, so you can't come in because the space is limited. Have we thought about all that chaos and confusion?
So, like, like the discussion, we're going to have to set up two sites. So those five tickets, Mr. Thompson, if I'm right, two of them will be colored different. Which means whoever gets, whoever the child wants the two colored tickets, they're allowed, if it rains, to go into the gym. So that'll be the backup plan if it does rain. So there'll be two designated tickets that'll be different colors than the original tickets to allow that person to get in specifically if it does rain.
That's a whole lot of expense for one extra, for even three extra tickets. That's a lot of extra work. But if we give them four tickets, are still only two would be able to come in though, right?
We're going to give five outside and we'll give two in, in case it rains.
All right.
Mr. Seale.
Mr. Sharp, you and Mr. Silver.
Mr. Silver, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Dr. Ellis, did we do anything in light of past twenty twenty graduating? Did we have any type of march or anything for them? Did I miss something with that?
Were you talking about last year?
Yes.
We just did the virtual, we did the drive-bys, we did, they filmed it, we went.
I got you.
Yeah, we did all those.
Okay. I think I remember now. What did you get my agent store kind of slipping to?
So the only comment that I would have is that Dr. Ellis's staff had did their due diligence. The principals have made the decision what they want to do.
Yes.
They've managed the schools. He managed the principals, the recommendation based on what the principals request, and that's what I would say we go with.
Not to rebut, but I, I will just say that in, in my short time here, other than reopening our, our schools, graduation last year was the most emails I got. I mean, that was the most engaged. Families were, students were. I probably got more student emails than parent emails last year. So being able to extend this as far as we can, realistically, I, I know hits home with our, our families and our students.
They're still getting five tickets and it's going to be streamed.
Yeah, right. So you, you're not going to be able to, you're not going to be able to meet everybody's requirement, what they decided to do. But my main concern is making sure that whatever the principal who manages that school, because there's doctor, they got to manage that process. I don't know if you manage trying to have people staying six feet apart and you got a thousand people and trying not to get them huddled together.
Mr. Edwards.
How are you going to ensure that if you did give up six, correction, five? That if it did rain, how are you going to account for just two if there's five out?
Because there'll be two, of the five tickets, two will have a different color. So if it starts raining or whatever, those who have those two colored ticket that those students choose, say, it's the mother and father. Those two tickets will be a different color so they can go into that gym.
Does it have the student's name on it or something?
It'll have, I think, Mr. Thompson, they have the school name and.
Yeah, I'm just wondering how your, I'm just wondering how your staff would be able to account for those two.
Right, and there'll be a different color set compared to those five. There'll be like a little, either a line, I, I know we talked about it, it'll be a different color, so you'll know which ones are designated. Well, that would be a mess. That could be a mess.
It can be.
Mrs. Sharp.
Yes, Mr. Sharp.
I want to piggyback on what Mr. Sharp said. He said something about the six feet. I've heard that some of our neighbors from surrounding counties are doing a three-feet thing rather than a six. That's just my, what I heard. And that might be more practical when you think about more realistic, three feet as opposed to six.
They're using a different math. They use a different math.
The toolkit says six.
Yeah, Rod, doesn't the toolkit still say six feet social distancing?
Yeah.
Mask and the way they enter, it's still, you know, six feet apart. I mean, that hasn't changed. I think the capacity has. And then I think it specifies if it's an outdoor event, that's not formal. So since this is formal, there are more restrictions than if it was less formal. So, you know.
Yeah, I think that's correct. I was trying to pull the last version, but that is my memory of the current version of the toolkit. And, you know, the other tricky thing about all of this is that, you know, under the return to school legislation, I mean, they're, you know, it says use the March fourth toolkit, even though, you know, other toolkits may have been issued. So there's a lot of conversation back and forth about, you know, which, you know, even though they've issued these later toolkits, you know, can you really rely on them, you know, to the extent that they are less restrictive than the March one? So I certainly think that what you have proposed fits what I understand the toolkit to be. I will, we can certainly take a look at it over the next day or two if you'd like and make sure that we're all on the same page, but what you've described is exactly what I understand it to be.
And I'll finish up by saying, I just wanted to have that discussion. You know, if the group is in agreeance with five, make sure we get that information out, because I read the Northern Nash Newsletter today, and it said they were only getting four tickets. So make sure you told your principals that agreed to five, they get that out to their people.
Any other questions? Down to the superintendent's report. Yes, that was just information then.
Yeah.
All right, get my report. It is a special week. It is Teacher Appreciation Week, so I just want to recognize all our outstanding teachers in the district, and I appreciate them first for choosing to be a teacher, but being in our district. It's been hard to celebrate with the COVID nineteen. We usually give cakes and things of that nature. That's a little hard to do now, but my heartfelt thanks. It's been a tough year, and I appreciate you being a part of Nash County. So thank you, teachers. Also, I'd like to congratulate our newest recipients of the NCPS heroes. That was a great, just to see kids and teachers in here. I don't know about y'all, but it makes it special. It kind of puts us while we're in this seat and while we're in these roles. So I appreciate that. Dr. Catalon's group tonight, that was perfect. Thank you. Also, the afternoon of the arts recognition was last Friday. The art work is now displayed on my wall, so if you get a chance, go down to them and the next van goes up there. It was a nice event with parents and students there and the art teachers, but it was good to be able to get out and see the students. Just a reminder, Teacher of the Year and Principal of the Year, three o'clock tomorrow at the Black Box of Rocky Mount High School. Also, early college graduation is May twenty seventh, and Tar River Academy is May twenty eighth. So I look forward to those events. Thank you. Head of Report, I'd like to thank everybody for the job they're doing. It was especially good feeling to see this room at least halfway full tonight. A lot of good positive vibes going on with the recipients of the awards. That's a good sign. I would still love to see all board members present at the next board meeting. Maybe CDC will relax some of the guidelines. We can finally have a full staff again. Like I said last time, we expect our teachers, we expect our teachers to be there. Board members need to be here. Schedule of upcoming meetings and important dates. Short board meeting with Edgecombe County Commissioners Monday, May tenth at seven P M. Dr. Ellis, you want to go over a little bit more about that meeting, what you found out? The, which one? The Edgecombe? Edgecombe. So we think right now it might be a Zoom link for board members if they want to come in here, where I think that me and Ms. Jarrett and Mr. Lamb will be invited to go to their place in Tarboro. So we'll have a live link. Am I saying that right for me? And you'll be able to see the meeting, and I believe it starts at seven o'clock. June Administrative Services and Operations Committee meeting, June seventh at five. June Student Support Services and Operations Committee meeting, June seventh at five thirty. June Academic Services and Accountability Committee meeting, June seventh starting at six o'clock. June Work Session, Monday, June seventh at six thirty. June Board Meeting, Monday, June seventh at seven o'clock. There may be some changing or amending the way these committee meetings are doing, going, because we cannot continue to have work sessions and regular board meeting starting thirty to forty five minutes behind schedule. I do not like that at all.
I agree.
I agree.
So we will do some adjusting or we'll cut off mics. This time I will entertain a motion
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Sharp, second by Ms. Davis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.